Shane is interested in like community garden and I think, um, who, uh, is it Rick? Was also doing?
Yeah, Rick.
Is it Richard? No, not Richard, you want, no, no.
No, yeah, see, I'm just saying.
Ricky's involved.
Rick isn't here, right?
No, he's not here.
But, uh, and I know Bernadette and, uh, Lucretia, you know, they were talking, you know, we've talked about basketball court here. So there's a lot of synergies, I think, here to try and get people that actually are vested, people that are excited, they're the perfect ones to tell us what to do. Now, there's no, um, there's no legal thing, it's just an advisory board. So basically, if you say, look, we looked at the parks plan, or, you know, we think we should have a, you know, a tube that goes in a semicircle on the playground, or basketball court here, or, you know, should we have a community garden in the Woodcrest lot? We have a water tap already there when we tore the house down, so the water's there all in sight. Um, should we try and use over near the, near the waste park plant where we can use recycle water? Um, you know, is that something that might, you know, play in? But lots of permutations, lots of possibilities. Uh, so, you know, I've been using Serena Lepley, she's kind of been my formal board, she's the one that did all the legwork on the playground equipment, because Serena's got three little ones and Diana, I know, helped out her and that was perfect. What do you think? What do the little ones want? She was the one that got the new swing set. She, she was doing all the research, told me what kind of swings do we want and all that kind of stuff. So, um, I think that worked out great. I've never seen as many kids on the playground in the last year than I've seen the last five years combined on that playground. It's, it's amazing, the, the number of little kids. So, um, anyway, so I, as an advisory board, I'd like to just turn them loose and let them meet. If, if a council member wants to kind of act as liaison, that's great, but I don't, you know, I think, I would certainly be glad to meet them initially, kind of give them all the information, they need maps, you know, the master plan, you know, we have site plans for the parks so they can draw on things and, you know, take you on a tour, I'd be glad to volunteer for that unless somebody else wants to do it. Liz.
I'm good.
You know, so, um, 'cause I know Liz has got little ones too. I mean, Liz, I think, you know, I've talked to you about some of this stuff.
Yeah, I started already contacting some vendors for some bids. I needed, um, the measurements and all that. I was gonna come out here with my little wheel and venture it out myself, but...
'Cause I think, I think that'd be great, you know, if you wanna act kind of as the advisor.
And if you need help.
So, um, I think there's six people that have volunteered their time, I think that... I don't even know the way it's, it's a formal appointment, it's two, they're volunteers, but I don't think it hurts. Does anybody have any, any other colors?
I mean, like, you know, Calipso, I've been here more procedural, uh, looks like we have four people that, you know, took the time and filled out the application and do the paperwork. Um, you know, I'm, I'm good if we, you know, accept those obviously. Apparently, so there are six, if we can just get the applications to run file.
Well, Serena's been doing it, so I don't...
Yeah, I would just say, I think everyone should kind of follow the same process. And then the other thing would be that, you know, if we're gonna have an advisory board, can we put them on the agenda every month, or, you know, every third month or something?
That's acceptable.
Yeah, so if we could just make it a standard part of our agenda, where the, you know, if we're gonna have an advisory board, if they, you know, come and provide advice, but they don't have to say what they want, well, let's just put them on the agenda so that they're a standard calendar.
Okay, what I'd like to do, I'd like to appoint all six from the view, because they've all volunteered, I don't see any reason not to just get this done, but let's move on. Let's, let's get them on, let's get it going. You can go ahead and hand out the, you know, I'll, I'll give you, Liz, you and I'll talk, I'll give you all the information, the maps, the, the site plans, all that, all the...
I have all six.
I was gonna give you four. I have, uh...
Online, on, or online right here.
So I have Rick's, uh, Lucretia's...
There are two that usually don't have applications for it, for the park for it.
Yeah, well, I told Serena not to, Serena's been there, so...
Oh, these are other applications.
They're on the board.
So, I'd like to just get, I'd like to get this going and get these, uh, get the board going, so we can all meet and get rock and roll. So give you your mandate and roll from there. So, 'cause I, Richard's here, Shane, uh, Shay's here, Bernadette, I can't see Lucretia, there she is, back left corner, okay. Um, do you guys have anything to, to add, anything to say? Not to sell yourself, but exactly, anything, uh, sound good?
Right now.
Okay, sounds good.
Well, I'm gonna ask a question to the, to people that volunteered, do you need any type of order put together? Rick, do you need, can you guys just work it out amongst yourselves, like, you know, this person did an order, this person...
I think maybe we could all, there's four of us here today, right now, maybe we could all just meet after the meeting and exchange numbers.
I love you.
Let it start.
Yeah, I've got Serena's copy of the information too. Okay, do I have a motion? I don't know if we even need one, I mean, uh, do we want a motion? Want a formally, don't everybody?
No motions.
Okay, go ahead, Liz. Motion...
I motion to appoint all six candidates to the advisory board for the parks development.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A second, Gary, always in favor? Okay, thank you. All right, I appreciate everybody for, for volunteering, that's great, because that's what we need, we, we need people to volunteer, help out, and, uh, we want to do this, you know, this isn't, um, this isn't a waste of time, we've got money, we've got the ability, we just don't know what to do, okay? The will is there, just don't know the what. But I appreciate it, thank you all very much. All right, next up, we have consideration of the 2017-2018 budget. Uh, what I've done is, um, whoops, so I printed out copies for everybody, uh, there on the, on the desk, if you wanna see a copy of it. What I, what I tried to do for, uh, to make things a little bit easier, so when we, when we did the budget last month, what I did is I, uh, I went through the budget, laid out all the numbers, and, um, gave everybody one to, kind of went through the numbers, see if there was any, any kind of things that they, that they needed. Lynn, did anybody request any additional information, any financial information?
Yes.
No, okay. So, the numbers, the numbers for, for this year, here's the summary sheet, as you can tell, uh, slight surplus in the general fund, um, a little bit of surplus in the utility fund, but that's assuming we're gonna spend seventy-five thousand in CapEx, that's a plug number, that's just a number that we plug in, uh, right now, that number is gonna be whatever we decide it's going to be. Uh, so that's kind of the general fund side, that's the summary. What I tried to do is, in order to make it a little bit easier, uh, so here's the general fund revenues, basically, I color coded it, so if it's green, it means it's the same numbers last year, it means it's basically in a steady state. So, you know, if you've got fence permit, we took in seventy-five dollars last year, yes, what's it gonna be this year? Seventy-five, hundred, whatever, double it, it doesn't matter. So the green numbers are numbers, we're working pretty much in a steady state, year after year, it's, they're not numbers that are gonna matter. Um, so, uh, most of those are the same, they're all plugged, those are the green numbers. Blue numbers are numbers where, um, it's discretionary, meaning it's a, it's a number that is changing, but if it's blue, it means we don't have any control over it. We have no control over what that number's going to be. So for instance, in this one here, um, where's my location? Here it is. So for instance, in the, um, in the general fund revenues, there's only, there's two blue ones, one here is building permits. We can't control that, there could be five houses, two, four, six, eight, nine, squared three, we, we don't know how many building permits we're gonna have. So that's just the long run average we've been using, okay? We got twenty-two thousand so far this year, we're gonna have another house come in next month, uh, we're gonna end up right around thirty thousand, the next one coming in has been generated about eighty-five hundred dollar building permit. So we'll be slightly over thirty thousand. This down here is lien receipts, we don't know if a property's gonna sell and they're gonna pay us back the liens that we have. We have liens on a lot of properties, empty lots, because of mowing liens. So every year, it's crap shoot, we, somebody buys a lot, next thing you know, mail, and there's a check, and it's from the title company. Or Lynn gets an email asking the title company, asking for the payoffs. We had one sell this year, the lien was from nineteen...
Ninety-six.
Ninety-six, it was a twenty-year-old lien, I think the interest was four times as much as the actual lien, you know, the mowing, so, um, so...
And, and some of the lots.
And, and there are other liens out there. So the blue ones are basically, we just look at the long run average, last year, we took in liens of twenty-three thousand dollars in liens last year, that was an aberration, we're not gonna put twenty-three thousand in there again. Typically, we get about three, one year we had six, one year was one, twenty-three, you just plug a long range number, go for three. Um, the thirty thousand building permits, like I said, is there. The numbers that are in yellow, yellow numbers, a yellow number is discretionary, it means, it means that we can pick any number we want. A yellow number means it's discretionary, so we're gonna set the tax rate next term, but that number right there is based upon, that's the number based on D-CAD, I get the reports every week, so that's the latest report as of Friday, um, as to what the appraised values are Lakewood Village after the appeals as of Friday. Um, so that's what that number is, but it's discretionary because we can change the tax rate, in theory, so we can make that number be, that number could be five hundred thousand if we wanted it to be, if we wanted to double the tax rate. We're not going to, but, so, that's the discretionary number. So as far as the general fund operating revenue, does, does anybody have any numbers that they'd like to change? Anybody have any number that, um, does anybody in the audience, that we look at, does anybody have any questions about any number that they're looking at? Not starting to change it, but any question about why it is what it is?
You're, you're talking about changing our property tax rate?
No, I'm not gonna change it.
I thought you were saying thirty cents is the twenty-five percent?
No, our, actually, it's Ben, it's twenty-five cents for the city.
Okay.
It's five cents for the bonds, for the concrete block, that's the same as it's, you know, that's no change.
Okay.
You, you should realize though, that every year the taxes do go up, right? So what's happening is if you look at how much revenue the town takes in, it's increasing every year. So when you look at the, the form, it's slightly above here, let's say there's the effective rate and there's the tax rate, the effective rate is what you should pay, the tax rate is, is even the same, the dollars go up. So the concern that Texas and a lot of towns are, is, you know, towns are constantly growing for no reason other than the property values go up, uh, that means expenditures keep going and things get out of control, anybody spending any other stage notes right on top.
I'm glad you brought that up, so here's something, one of the things I did was I looked back over time, this is my eleventh budget, I've done eleven times, so what this is, this represents our tax rate in the eleven years I've been here, okay? So, here's a handout for everybody, I'm gonna put it up on the big screen too. So what I did was, I went back to the first budget I ever did, I've done every budget for eleven years, um, so if you go back and you look at our budgets, what you find is that, uh, so back in two thousand and eight, we took in a hundred seventy-nine thousand six hundred ninety-four dollars, that's what we took in, that was the certified amount. As of last year, the certified final numbers for the year that we're in now is two eighteen, so over the ten years that I've been doing budgets, an entire ten-year decade, now that includes new houses that have gone in, that's not your house, that includes about twenty new houses, so that's the grand total, including all the new stuff. So, we're going, our property taxes, the big nut, the grand total, has gone up about two percent a year over the decade that I've been here. This is little hours, hundred and forty-two percent. This is the kind of stuff that drives people, because well, not only raised their tax rates, but they also grew, well, it's the same, that's what their growth in there, and that's what our growth in there. So, our tax rate hasn't changed in forty-two years, so when it went down, it went down, it went back up, it went back up, we're basically, we V-ed it, we're in a V, right? Things went down, then they went back up again, and we're just now, last year was the first year we got above, two thousand and eight, but that's kind of where we're at as far as the ta, the property taxes go. So, you know, and again, that's what new houses going in, just on my street alone, my neighbor to the left, he's got a one and a half million dollar house, my neighbor to the right, he's got a two million dollar house, the neighbor next to him is a one and a half million dollar house, all built the last three years. That's brand new stuff that's included in that number. So, the average, you know, house hasn't gone up much from two thousand and eight at all in this ten, and that's, that's our overall property taxes.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
If we looked at over, instead of choosing two thousand and eight, if we had chosen two thousand and ten?
Well, two thousand and eight was when I was elected.
Well, I understand, I'm just gonna just ask, you know, the last five years, the last six years, any idea what the percentage is?
Well, you can pick any point you want.
No, I'm just asking, because I mean, I've been here six years.
You can pick from the bottom to the top, you're gonna get a...
I'm, I'm just asking a question, if we were to take the last five years, would it be two percent?
I don't know what it would be. So, I mean, why would I check the last five years? The whole objective is, I've been here since two thousand and eight.
Part of the, you know, part of the ten years is that's some of the numbers that you asked for in ten-year forecasting, so...
Actually, it's five years, but that's, but either way, I'm not gonna ten years, I was just, it'd be interesting to see, 'cause we know in two thousand and eight, you know, that was the peak, right, and then dropped, right, so the question is like, if it's two percent increase from ten years ago, is it two percent increase from five years ago? Like, my guess would be, no, I've been here six, seven years, something like that. I know mine's gone up way over two percent annually over the year, so I'm just kind of curious if it'd be, I mean, here, the point of doing this is the state's taxes aren't going up, but we know the town's taking in, you know, seventy-eight percent more...
No, it's not, no, it's not. So we know that's a fact. That's absolutely not true, that's absolutely not true.
Look at your own budget and see it, right?
Okay, look, let me, let me explain something to the audience, okay? Let me explain the difference to what Dan's trying to do, okay? This is my wallet, okay? There it is. Take whatever you want out of my wallet, that's a tax, that's a tax, he can take whatever he wants out of my wallet, that's a tax. This is my cellphone. What I pay each month for this cellphone is a fee. If I don't wanna use a cellphone, I don't pay this fee, okay? The city takes in fees, build a new house, put in a fence, put in a pool, you have to pay fees because we have to pay the building inspector. We have no control over that, that's not us out of control with our revenues, you're out of control. No, if five houses come in, they pay fees because we have to pay the building inspector. This is my wallet, right here, this is a tax, you can take anything you want out of my wallet, that's what that tax line is. Over ten years, out of this wallet, we've taken twenty percent in the decade that I've been here, total. The fees have gone up and down because we have five houses, we have two houses, we have one house, we have four houses, we get liens, like twenty-three thousand dollars in liens came in, it goes up and down, those are recovering fees that we spent, that's money we spent getting abatements, and now we're getting back in a different year. So seeing how much revenue we have is meaningless, this is the thing you should be concerned about. I worry about this too, taking money out of my wallet because you wanna spend my money, that concerns me, that's why I busted my hump for a decade, and we're only up twenty percent over a decade, that's why the tax rates descend, so that's this. Comparing it to this is bogus, because we have no control over people who wanna put in a pool, or you wanna put in a fence, you wanna put in a new driveway, yes, we're gonna charge you a fee, we're gonna charge you a fee because we have to pay the building inspector, we don't need to keep the money, it's money going in, that's the difference between a service, a fee is for a service, a tax is going in my wallet. Taxes, these gentlemen get to pick, I'm sorry, and Liz, ladies and gentlemen, they get to pick that tax, they get to pick it, but the fees are recovering, they're recovering because we have to pay the money out, okay? So, that's a big difference, so when you look at the revenue number, that doesn't make any sense, that's a nonsensical comparison, okay?
So maybe I didn't, maybe I didn't say it right, let me, let me just ask the council a little bit, our total revenue, four hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, some of that is fees, most of that is taxes, and there's a few other little things that make sense. My question is, if every year the total revenue is going up, is increasing, so ten years ago you took in two hundred thousand in property debts, and then you institute things like sales tax, you get some other things, you get smaller revenue streams, the town is taking in, according to budget, four hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. My question is, if you're just spending it, then the government is growing, and again, the reason we need budget workshops, which is the whole reason I'm here, is because there are certain things that we're just living off, AKA the roads. We haven't touched the roads in two-thirds of the town in the last fifteen, I don't know, twenty years, thirty years?
We've passed them, I know, yeah.
That's right, that's right, you know, that's why we passed last year, yes, that's right. So the, the concern is that we're taking in, if we used to take in two hundred X number of dollars, and now we're taking in four hundred and forty-six dollars, right, I'm not gonna say it's doubled, but it's, it's close, right, it's somewhere, is that money going towards town infrastructure? So I've already asked, you know, uh, you know, Gary, the, the money coming in, is it being appropriately covered? And again, that's why the, the state controller recommends you do budget workshops, right? The TML says, hey, you do budget workshops.
The reason why we don't do budget workshops is because we have like four yellow lines, we only have five discretionary numbers in the whole city.
So, again, I was talking, okay?
So that's, that's why we don't do budget workshops, we can do a budget workshop if you want, why you gotta just get, get four council members to agree? We did a budget workshop last year, do you recall? It was silly, all you said was you set, you set the numbers to zero and said, this is how we're gonna save money. You set it under salary to zero and said, look, we saved sixty thousand dollars, it's a silly thing to do.
I think your statement's a little silly, but that's what I...
The other thing, Dan, is saying the numbers went off.
Let me change my conversation.
Do you know what, you know, what was our, what was our revenue in two thousand and eight that we don't even know what was?
My question is, the question is, are we saving the revenue appropriately, which probably, are we spending it appropriately? And all I've pointed out last year and this year is that we're not putting money where it belongs, in other words, core infrastructure. So if you think about it, it's relatively simple, you don't get much from a town, you get, you got your picked up, you get your water taken care of, right, you get, you get a couple, all those things you're built separately for, right?
So, when you ride your bike through, what, what country that wasn't core infrastructure that was put in that town?
My question is, are we putting any money away for the core infrastructure, that's all I'm saying, and in the budget, there's zero, so I think we should have a question now.
I think if you wanna talk about planning, I think that's a worthwhile discussion, if you wanna talk about long-range planning, that's perfectly fine, but we're talking about next year's budget.
Yep.
Okay, next year's budget.
There's not even a line on it to put money away, so that's my time.
We have to start, we have to start at one, at some point, whether it's this year, next year, we have to start at some point, planning for the future.
That's right.
So, we're looking at revenues, obviously, we can't really dictate as far as income is twenty-five percent regardless, it's gonna stay twenty-five percent and five percent for the bond. What we do need to concentrate on is our expenses, and making sure that they're going where they need to go.
Okay, so, yeah.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
On, on the back of your, uh, headlamp?
Yeah.
It says, uh, fire hydrants, water, and solar.
It was CapEx, it was expense, yeah.
Okay, I, I was saying, that's a...
We work in the first, right?
Yeah, we do it each year.
Well, again, the, the concern is, there's no plan for that, so when we're asked, hey, if you're gonna replace fire hydrants, how many are you gonna replace and what's the cost and what's the time? So like a project plan, right?
It does have a...
We have a, it has a cost, but you don't know how many, so is that for one, is that for ten?
It says one, because it, that someone's sure that it's a plan.
We, but we, Richard, we have a fire hydrant plan with a map, we've approved twelve fire hydrants. Now, before Dan was on the council, so it's a map, it's all you're gonna prove, so we, we do have a plan, that's why we put in ten of the twelve fire hydrants.
So last year, so last year when we were doing fire hydrants, a question was asked, how many fire hydrants are we gonna do, where are they gonna go, and what's the timeframe? Couldn't get an answer, so the next question, the following months, we asked the same question, say, hey, how much are you gonna spend, if you're gonna spend money on fire hydrants, that's great, but hey, start and what's the plan? How do we hold our better accountable, that's all I'm asking. And the fact that we don't have that accountability is my concern, I'm not saying don't do it, I'm saying control the expenditure, that's all I'm saying, is we should have a few more eyes on it. Now, the same thing goes for legal fees, and when you, when you, when you call the lawyer when he attends our meeting last year, you spend money on legal fees, some things are unavoidable, but most of that is within our control. The concern is, do we have anybody watching those dollars, and if so, is there any controls on them? Now, I'm not saying don't call the lawyer, I'm saying let's watch this stuff. So, when it comes to CapEx, I'll summarize just a minute, when it comes to those CapEx expenditures, all I've asked for is basic project plan, right? What's the date, what's the start, and what's the risk, what's the cost, and who's gonna be doing it, who's gonna be following it?
Are you doing that day?
So I, yeah, so I've asked for the information, I think, four or five times, they can't get it, the council doesn't wanna plan, so that's my budget concern, right? Is if you're gonna put a budget like this, so just throw the little plan in there, so free trial's CapEx that we've got?
Okay, let me, let me explain you how we do it. I've been doing this, again, here's how we do it practically, okay? We're not gonna come up with a calendar, we're not gonna come up with itemized expenses, a calendar, all these kind of things for CapEx until, till the council says, that's a good idea.
Why?
Because none of us get paid to do this, so for instance, you know, your, the whole idea is, okay, first off, do we want to put another piece of playground equipment out there? Because unless you say yes, I'm not wasting the time getting bids, searching it out, calling people, trying to figure out how to fit it in, doing a site plan, we don't do that stuff until, if the council now says, yes, we're going to repair that, we're gonna replace the stone lift station, that's a CapEx, if the council says, we believe that's a worthwhile project, then what I do is I go out now and get, here's the firm cost estimate, here's how long it's gonna take, we get the firm numbers because now we're moving forward. It's not approved, I bring back the real numbers, and then they vote on it, to authorize that project, it's a multi-step, because I'm not wasting my time, this is a laundry list of CapEx projects, potential projects, why it says, potential projects, whatever they decide, prioritizing or whatever, then I go out and get the firm numbers, and then they come back here and they approve.
So say we want a neighborhood watch sign, we come to you and...
Yeah, right now, we, we do is, is for CapEx, we look at it and say, I identify, I talk to our guys, our infrastructure, I talk to our water and sewer guys, I identify potential projects, and I say, give me a ballpark number, I need to get it close, it doesn't have to be an eight decimal place, you just, give me, is it eighty thousand or twenty thousand? So, that's how we do the CapEx, because if they tell me they don't wanna do the fire hydrant, they don't wanna add water to Parkwood, that's over, then it doesn't matter what it costs.
Okay, let's be, let's, let's just be honest here for a second. Dan, you're, you're complaining about roads, right? That's your primary focus.
No, I'm, I'm complaining about the lack of focus, the lack of attention to the expenditures from the town, uh, roads being...
Okay, well, you've got the budget here, what, what do you think you should, we should reduce or cut? I mean, I think Mark's asked that question, but let me say something else, you keep bringing up this road issue, which is a little bit irritating because, and you, and I'm not, I'm not saying that we shouldn't save for it, but you know, do you know that if that, if we did the other part of the city, and let's assume a one-point-five million dollar expense, capital expense, and we save fifty thousand dollars a year, you know how many years it takes us to do it? Thirty. I'm not saying it's a bad thing to do, but I mean, it's not something that you, you do such a large infrastructure project with in a very short period of time, and you can save a dollar here, you can save a dollar there, fine, let's hear what you suggest we change. All I hear is high-level complaining about the budget, but I, I don't see, pardon me, I don't see any specifics of how to get there.
Would you like me to ask?
Sure.
All right, so it's the same stuff as last year, right? If you compare it to other towns, and you take a look at, you say, how do other towns do the budget, both the TML and the Texas Control, I kind of walk you through it, here's how you do it, and they give you a pretty straightforward process.
I gotta tell you, very honestly, I have to agree with Mark, the, the budget workshops last year were a waste of time, you may have thought it was the greatest thing since sliced bread, it was a waste of time, there was nothing constructive that came out of it, in my judgment, not one thing.
We're here right now, let's workshop.
Yeah, let's do it.
Dan, every time I ask you for a specific, you talk about the process, I wanna have I wanna have a big budget workshop. Look, pick the number, it's in yellow up there, pick it. How much do you wanna spend on the town engineer? Pick a number, pick it.
Let's talk about this. The process is to bring out good results. Every other town follows the same process.
Every other town is in 650 people.
We're Lakewood Village.
How many people do we have on our staff, Dan?
I'm recommending...
You're looking at them right here, and some of them don't do a damn thing.
I'm recommending best practices.
Some of them don't do a thing.
So, let me tell you about Dan's best practices. Let's have the head of HR, you know, do his, we don't have departments. So, here's the idea, let's get back to the expenses. Here we go. Does anybody have any changes on the revenue side?
I, I don't.
Any changes on revenue?
No, I, I have some.
Okay, this, all right, this is the general fund expense side. Does anybody have any, any questions about now? On the expense side here for the town engineer, we've already approved the contract we're gonna talk about for the impact fee money. It's already been approved. The money's basically, if we update the impact fee like I'm requesting, that number's gonna be 9,000, but this number, money was approved prior year. So, we're just shifting money from last year, it was approved, to actually spend it in this year. So, this, this first...
Would we still show it in this year's budget, even though we planned for it last year?
We put it in last year's budget, we didn't spend it, so now we're rolling it into this year. So, my guess is, since we're gonna spend it this year...
Just show it so that...
Show it this year, because this is where we're gonna, does that make sense, Larry?
Wasn't accrued last year?
No, we didn't accrue it, because, yeah, no, it was not accrued.
For this year?
It's just like, we've been for it twice, we're finally spending it.
Yeah, so the council approved spending an X amount of dollars, it became an under X, and now we're gonna... So, I think, I think we're gonna put 9,000 in that slot.
And that's the number that Todd is forecasting?
Actually, I'm sorry, it doesn't, my, my, it goes in the gen, it goes in the utility fund, engineers side, so, my bad.
Well, no, actually, while we're here, though, we did, we did this also, we had that conversation for it, and I met with Todd, just started asking him for some road items.
Okay.
But we don't have the firm numbers of what they think they're gonna do. Something we did was ask for a task load, so we'll start the road planning process.
So, one of the things that Clint is bringing up is that we started tasking the engineers to start long-range planning for our concrete roads. So, we're starting to think about things like streetlights in the shores, and how, do we wanna replace them, do we wanna remove them? We're starting to think way out there, looking at, you know, we have, we have some pretty serious problems in the shores with mailboxes. The mailboxes are in the road. So, we've, we've got some planning issues that, they're pretty far out, we're getting a little bit out there, but...
Well, also, when, when we did the roads over here, we didn't do a drainage, we did a road project on the drainage, and that was kind of, this time we're gonna start looking at drainage, and so when we do the roads, we do both at the same time.
So, the idea that Clint and Ed kind of, kind of pushed forward was, if there's some things we can knock off from the next four years, maybe do the drilling, the technical work, you know, some of the survey work. There's some of the stuff we can pick off as we go, then that just reduces the amount we have to do later down the road.